Good evening. I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order on this Monday, March 4th, 2014. And we're glad to see everyone here this evening. Sorry, there's standing room only. I know we have more chairs in the back, gentlemen, for the bowling team. You're more than welcome to stay after we get done with our recognition, so please join us, stand for the invocation, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, I would like to just have a moment of silence. Amen. In addition to the moment of silence, I would like to say that we want to remember Bill Carver, our fellow commissioner, who's went out of country and became sick and is still on the mend and struggling to get back with us. We'd like to say a prayer for him. Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have your agenda in front of you. Is there any additional items for the agenda?
Are we able to move 6A to the consent agenda?
Did you?
Motion to move 6A to the consent agenda.
You wish to move 6A, which is Lee County Schools' purchase request for Broadway Presbyterian Church parking lot, move that to the consent agenda? Any other items to add or change on the agenda? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent agenda as amended.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then approval of the agenda as amended, have a motion? Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comments. And I have Hanaya Benitez, is that pronounced correctly? Hanaya?
Hanaya.
Hanaya, okay. You have to understand that my family is Hannah's, and Hannah in Scottish is H-A-N-N-A-Y. So I was close, I apologize.
Very good, I appreciate your attempt.
Thank you.
Esteemed members of the Board of Commissioners and community members in attendance, good evening and thank you for granting me the opportunity to speak with you today. I am Hanaya Benitez, Lee County Deputy Director for the Hispanic Liaison. We are here tonight to extend a warm and exclusive invitation to each of you for an event that promises not only to entertain but also to enlighten. In our community, we recognize the power of storytelling and how it can bridge gaps, foster understanding, and ignite change. It is with this belief in the transformative power of narrative that we have organized a special film screening event designed to engage, provoke thought, and perhaps even challenge our perspective. On Thursday, March 14, at the Dennis A. Wicker Civic and Conference Center, we are co-hosting a special film screening of the critically acclaimed North Carolina film Bulls and Saints, or Toros in Santos. This film has garnered attention and praise for its profound storytelling and its ability to address themes of love, tradition, and the longing to return home. We believe it aligns perfectly with our community's values and aspirations. This screening isn't just about watching a film, it's about coming together as leaders and influencers in our community to share in an experience that reflects on the values we strive to uphold and promote. It's about creating a space for dialogue and understanding, about seeing through lenses different from our own, and considering how, as a board, we can foster initiatives that reflect the lessons and messages we take from the cinematic journey. We have arranged for a post-screening community dialogue, offering us a platform to deliberate on the film's themes and how they intersect with our community's current challenges and opportunities. This conversation aims to spark ideas and strategies for our ongoing work in enhancing the well-being and prosperity of our community members. The evening will end with a warm reception to allow a more intimate opportunity to meet with community panelists and audience members. The doors will open at 5:30, which will allow us a moment to mingle and settle in before the film starts at 6:00. Your presence at this event would be greatly valued, not just as commissioners, but as vital members of our community, with the insight and ability to affect change. This is an excellent opportunity for us to step back from our daily responsibilities and engage with something that could influence our approach to leadership and community development in profound ways. We sincerely hope you will set this invitation to join us for an evening of cinema that promises to be as enriching as it is enjoyable. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Benitez, you were supposed to report your name and your address. Just get with the clerk, please. I'm sorry. Vice chairman kept me in line. Next item on the agenda is the proclamation presentation honoring the Southern Lee High School State Championship Bowling Team, and I'm turning it over to Commissioner Lovick.
Take this out so I can turn around and face as more people this way than is this way. Okay, what you have before you tonight is something that I think Southern Lee High School started 16 years ago, is that right, Ms. Beautiful? Is it 16 years, the school?
Actually, we're 19, but bowling is only four years.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the school in existence, so 19 years. So in 19 years, Southern Lee High School has never had a state championship team. They've had individuals, they've had other things, but never a team in school history. And the last team event that I'm aware of was 2004, when Lee County won the state baseball championship. So that's a lot of years. So what you have standing here before you tonight is young men and some, we'll say, a little bit older coaches that help these young men out to win a state championship. It's something that they really don't really realize what they've done right now. And tonight, as a commissioner, but not only a commissioner, I got two of my own on this bowling team, so I get to recognize that. So proud commissioner for how you represented Lee County, Lee County School Systems, but also proud dad tonight. So I'm going to read a special proclamation for you men on the event which you did to win the championship, and it's a proclamation recognizing the achievement of Southern Lee High School Men's Bowling Team. And it says, "Whereas the Southern Lee High School Men's Bowling Team, the Cavaliers, exhibited hard work, dedication, exemplary talent in the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Bowling Tournament. And whereas the Cavaliers won the 2024 State Championship on February 11th after winning against teams from Scotland County and Pinecrest High School in the state finals. And whereas the team format is a rotation of five members, two frames each, with Mark Lovick as the leadoff, bowler of the Cavaliers, followed by Tucker Maria, Landon Lovick, Blaine Downey, and Markell Brown, under the leadership of head coach Vicki Wilkins and assistant coaches Peggy Gunner and Wayne Gamble. Whereas the Cavaliers drew Scotland in the semifinals and defeated the Scots with a score of 216 to 183 in the first set of the best of two out of three rounds after a four-banger hot streak, four consecutive strikes in frames through five through before going into the second and final round with the Cavaliers winning 187 to 167 and securing the spot in the state finals. And also, whereas after struggling in the first game, this is the victory game against Pinecrest and losing 205 to 162, the Cavaliers rallied and won the second game, 204 to 203, forcing the third game. Whereas the Cavaliers fought for each frame with eight strikes, numerous spares resulting in another win against Pinecrest with a final score of 223 to 202 for the state championship title. And whereas the bowlers from both the men's and women's team also successfully individuals with the men's top bowler, Markell Brown, this is this young man right here, winning the individual men's state championship in Tucker Maria, there's Tucker right here, placing third with a 187. And Peyton Johnson of the women's team finished 19th in the state. And whereas without the efforts of the former Lee County Athletic, Southern Lee Athletic Director Ernie Purnsley, the bowling program would not be what it is today as he instructed in starting the program up in 2021 and 2022 and coached for those first two years. Whereas the Cavaliers represented Lee County admirably in the NCHSA men's state bowling tournament to close out this 2024 bowling season. And now, therefore, the Lee County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 5th, not this voting day, but Southern Lee High School Men's Bowling Team Day in Lee County, North Carolina, and calling upon the residents to observe this day, recognizing the celebrating the team and their contributions to success shared with Lee County community. And it's signed by our Chair, Kirk D. Smith, and also by our Clerk Haley Hall. So to make this official, we have to vote on it as commissioners. So what I'm going to do is, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept this proclamation.
Motion's been made to accept the proclamation honoring the Lee County, excuse me, Southern Lee High School State Championship Bowling Team. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, it's now official. Now, so with that being said, I was down at that game, the tournament. So these guys got looked pretty bad on the final, final three, two out of three wins all for the state championship. They had their worst game. And you've heard of one of those deals to where, you know, everything lines up right and they started having to believe. They won the second game, I don't know if you've heard it, right, 204 to 203, one pin, held in the balance of them going to the championship or getting beat two games in a row. So I want to look at you men and each person in here tonight, which one of those pins was the most valuable on that victory? See, the answer is all of them. You were a team. It took all of you. That's the reason it's a team championship and they're tougher to win a lot of times. And I want to think, we know it was Ms. Beautiful for coaching. Different position and he wasn't going to be able to coach. And they said, Dad, why don't you coach? And I was like, you don't want me to coach, I've coached other sports, plenty of them, but not bowling. They can whip me pretty good in that. But what I learned from each one of these guys going down there, watching them throughout the year, is how they started to believe in themselves and become young men. And that's what's going to take you in life. But if you don't remember anything else, remember that one pin was yours the most important.
Can I, Ms. Beautiful, if we'd like to say anything?
Sure, I would.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
I'll present you with this. So after you speak, we'll come up here if you guys like to get a picture.
Members of the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, we are honored to be here tonight. We are thrilled that you invited us to recognize this team. It is the biggest deal in terms of high school athletics. You get to a regional or you get to a playoff, that's a pretty good deal. But if you make it to the states and then you come through as these young men did, it is unbelievable. It's almost hard to grasp, really and truly. And I just want to say thank you, of course, to my school in terms of what we do at Southern Lee High School, in terms of academics and athletics, my athletic director, Mr. Tommy Harrington, my dean of students, Mr. Ernie Purnsley, who was the man who initially began coaching this team. We found these charming people here. Yes, we did. If they could be on the professional bowling tour, they would be, but they're at the Sandhills Lanes Tour is where they are. But this is Ms. Peggy Gunner, and this lady has been bowling for over 50 years. Yeah, I will take her as a coach any day. And this handsome man here, Mr. Wayne Gamble, and both of them have claimed to fame to two of the young men on this team as well. But without these two people, we would have never done it because you all were just unbelievable, working with us, having patience with us. Because Ms. Beautiful does tennis, and yes. And so I have learned a lot about bowling. Yes, I have, a tremendous amount. But gentlemen, I'm proud of you and all that you've accomplished. And as Mr. Lovick said down there, they did not give up that day. I looked at them whenever we were, our backs were to the wall, and I said, Look, we came down here to dance. I said, When I go to a dance, I dance the last dance. And so when it came to that second game, I looked at them and I said, This is not the last dance. I said, We're going to take this dance and the next dance. And they did. So I'm extremely proud of them, not just because it's Southern Lee High School. This is bigger than Southern Lee High School. This is Sanford, North Carolina. This is Lee County, North Carolina. And we represent everybody in this county. It's not just Southern Lee High School. So thank you again for the invitation, and we would be honored to be in a picture with all of you.
Yes, we all.
One thing, one thing I didn't mention during all this, you're looking at a team that doesn't even have a home bowling alley. Another adversity to overcome. So they have to travel to Aberdeen just to practice. So that's another pretty big accomplishment when you can't play in your own backyard. Give me the money, brother, we'll build.
I think somebody in the private sector's got a plan for that. Years ago, it was brought before the city council off of Kelly Drive, the intersection with Kelly Drive and the bypass, the Odom property. But you know how plans are. Okay, moving on. Under all business, the Planning Board recommendation for rezoning request. And before I do, I do need to ask, does any member have any conflict of interest regarding this particular rezoning? If so, please state so. We have no conflict of interest. Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, County Chair, Commissioners, the Planning Board met on February 19th after the public hearing was held and unanimously recommended that the Commissioners approve the request to rezone 3.38 plus or minus acres of two tracts of land addressed at 2909 Jefferson Davis Highway from highway commercial to light industrial to allow the development of the site in a light industrial manner. Topics of discussion with the Planning Board included that there was no opposition to the request, that the lots were located off a major highway, the existing buildings were conducive to light industrial type uses, and because of the linear configuration of the lot, any residents in the vicinity were located quite a distance away from where the operation of the business would be occurring. The Board acknowledged by unanimous vote that the rezoning request was not consistent with the Plan San Lee's long-range plan designation of countryside because the place type was not typically supportive of industrial uses. But they did note that in general, the surrounding area around the site was more rural in nature. As a reminder, the Commissioners should make two votes regarding this matter. Sample motions are provided for your reference. Commissioners are always welcome to draft a unique motion if preferred. Also, the Commissioners may acknowledge that the zoning map amendment is not consistent with the plan and still to vote to approve the request. And I'll pause there for any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Montgomery. Commissioner Sharp?
None.
Commissioner Reeves?
None.
Commissioner Warbick?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
No questions? Okay. Seeing there are no questions, do I have a motion to approve the recommendation of the Planning Board, or do we need to do, I don't have a sample.
Sample motions aren't in there, it doesn't appear.
Okay.
But you can just walk them through, if you have them right there.
Okay. So motion number two, and similar to what the Planning Board did, I make a motion that the proposed zoning map amendment is not consistent with the Plan San Lee Long Range Plan designation of countryside because light industrial zoning is typically not found on agricultural and undeveloped lands.
So the first motion is not consistent with Plan San Lee. Do I have such motion?
So, no, the second one is the...
That's the second one, we knew.
That is with the consistency with the plan, which the Planning Board said was not consistent, but they did approve the rezoning request. Remember, there's two motions.
I caught that.
And you can do that. So you can find it to be inconsistent, but you can still vote to approve the rezoning.
Okay. Motion two, agree with the Planning Board that it's nonconsistent with the Plan San Lee long-range planning and development, and also approve the emotion of the...
We have to do two motions separate. So we will recognize that it's not being consistent with Plan San Lee.
That works.
Any further questions? Seeing there are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, motion to approve the...
Rezoning.
Rezoning.
Motion's been made to approve the rezoning for Michael L. Cranford's 3.38 acres, two tracts of land addressed at 2909 Jefferson Davis Highway. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is, and I do believe we need to make a motion.
Yes, this, I'll be recusing myself from 5B and 5C as well.
So Madam Clerk, note that the request for recusal by Commissioner Sharp has been made for items 5B and 5C. Any further discussion on the recusal? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. You're now recused, sir. Take a break. Okay, and Amy's here, thank you.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners and everyone. This information is on pages 121 through 128 of your agenda packet. The Planning Board met on February the 19th after the public hearing was held and recommended by a six-to-one vote that the Commissioners approve the proposed text amendment to allow major subdivision plats to be reviewed for compliance with the UDO subdivision regulations and all applicable policies and regulations by the Technical Review Committee, or TRC, and then also approved by the TRC, thereby removing the Planning Board and Commissioners from the review and approval process for major subdivision preliminary plats. Topics of discussion included that the Planning Board would no longer be able to look at plats, making suggestions regarding the subdivision design, such as installing a fence along a property line that may adjoin a neighbor that has a house close to the property line, and that the applicant may or may not agree to do so. And that if plats are removed from the agendas, the Planning Board would not be aware of issues that frequently come up that may be addressed by future amendments to the UDO. The Board member who cast the dissenting vote expressed interest in revisiting this text amendment in the future, when and if the volume of subdivisions proposed in the county increased. The vote on this matter does not require an acknowledgement of the Plan San Lee. A simple vote to either approve or deny the proposed text amendment will suffice. Are there any questions?
Questions for Ms. McNeil. Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Warbick?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve the UDO text amendment revising the approval process?
Can you make a motion to not approve it?
You can make a motion to not approve it?
Okay.
Motion's been made to not approve the UDO text amendment revising the approved process for preliminary major subdivision plats. Any further discussion?
Yeah, let me ask you one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
If you, if we approve her motion, we still have the right to consider it?
In the future.
And if we choose to place it on our consented agenda afterwards, that works too?
Yes, sir.
That way it gives the public an opportunity, if they want to challenge what the TRC and Planning Board did.
Yes, sir, in that it does place the item on an agenda, so the public is aware of it. However, subdivision plats do not require a public hearing, so the public would have to sign up for their three minutes.
Right, it still leaves the door open for them.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Let's get that Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda is the Planning Board recommendation for the UDO text amendment, major subdivision preliminary plat extension. And Ms. McNeil's still here.
Yes, sir. Once again, the Planning Board met on February the 19th after the public hearing was held and recommended by unanimous vote that the Commissioners approve the proposed text amendment to extend the original approval period for major subdivision preliminary plats from two to five years, with two years allowed for all subsequent extensions. Also, any plat that was approved between January 1st, 2021, and December 31st, 2023 will receive an automatic extension not to exceed five years. Topics of discussion included that recently the Board had a meeting with only a major subdivision preliminary plat extension on the agenda, so they were basically paid to attend and rubber stamp a plat that was approved a few years back, to which no changes have been made, and that a developer would be allowed five years to complete a subdivision and would not have to comply with...
It's also the fact that these projects are bigger than they used to be and they encompass more land, so therefore they have more environmental approvals that they need through the state. They may need approvals for floodplain, wetlands, sedimentation, erosion control, and they're in a lot of different phases, so it takes more time than it used to.
Is, you said that's more in the city, so the county, would you say the county's still okay if we approved three years? Would that be?
Yes, sir. There are, most of the subdivisions are being proposed for development in the city because of the access to public sewer.
No further questions, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the extension to three years. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Thank you very much. And we are past new business, went to the consent agenda. Moving on to managers' report.
Yes, sir. Two things, quickly. The meeting site for our next meeting was supposed to be here. We discovered today there was a conflict that we didn't know about, so we will be at the Civic Center on 3/19. We will need to let you know as we get closer to that date exactly where in the Civic Center we will be, but we will be back at the Civic Center on the 19th, so wanted to let you know about that. Excuse me, 18th, sorry, day off. Also, you have at your spot a diagram of a bus garage and some notes. On February 21st, a group from the county and some from the Lee County Schools went and visited Chatham County and Chatham County Schools bus garage. They have a joint operation there where part of the facility is dedicated to county service of vehicles and part of it is dedicated to school facility, school buses and other vehicles at the schools. And they have a joint operation there. So we went up and looked at that because we knew the schools had in their CIP a school bus garage, and I had been told that they had developed this program, so we did go up and visit with them. So just wanted to provide that information to you. You'll be hearing more about it as we develop our CIP in the next few months.
It was a very nice facility and they have a joint working relationship with the Board of Education and the county, and we're moving in that direction as well. I do want to say thank you to Chatham County for allowing us that opportunity. And unfortunately, I'm abiding by the 10th commandment not to covet, but let me tell you something, they got a nice facility.
It was, I mean, for to have several years on it, it was a spotless facility. I specifically even asked the gentleman from the schools that we were walking with was, had they cleaned up just because we were coming? And I was told, no, that's how they keep it because it is, it was such an enhancement and improvement over what they had previously. So we would...
How much acreage do they have?
On that site in that area, I think that's part of the 250 acres that Chatham County was able to acquire. So that's a whole, they intend this to be a whole campus eventually. On this acreage, I'd have to get the exact acreage that they've dedicated to this one facility, but...
That's what I'd be interested in.
We could easily do it at the Jonesboro site that we're looking at, plus, you know, we are also looking at the possibility of developing a warehouse facility with Colts and storage of Colts vehicles on the same side.
Thank you, sir.
We would not, I will say too, if you notice on here, they may reference the gasoline tanks. We would not be doing that because we have the storage and the gas dispensing at our current operations facility and that's serving us fine, and we already work with the schools on that. So we would not be doing that section of this. The project would not be including that if we do it.
If we did something like this, joint with our sheriff's office, would they be filling up there still with the county facility or what's our plan?
Right. We would not be doing a gas dispensing system over here.
Okay.
Okay, it would stay at the operations center.
Yes.
And we are, like I said, we already accommodate the schools there. They come and fill up there and take the...
They have a tanker.
Tanker, tanker to the school buses already. So we would not have to do that portion. We would just be doing the garage portion at that time.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, next item on the agenda is commissioners' comments, and I'll start with Commissioner Lovick, and you are going to be gavelled if you go over three minutes.
Put the timer up, please. Thank you for the honor of reading the proclamation tonight. It was an honor on both sides, as a commissioner and as a parent, so thank you for that. Remember, last day of voting tomorrow, get out and do your civic duty. Let's continue. Remember, as Commissioner Sharp said, or Commissioner Bill Carver, he needs our prayers, so let's lift him up in that. And thank you again for everyone coming out tonight. Have a good evening, be safe. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Vorbeck?
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
Tomorrow's the final day of voting. Exercise your right to vote. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp? Welcome back?
I don't have anything.
He said, "Welcome back."
Oh.
I do want to echo the, tomorrow's the last day of primary election day. Don't forget your ID. Had someone over here, when I was working the polls, they were insisting, "Well, we can vote, we just don't have my license." And I'm like, "You really do need your license because it's all the provisional ballot and all that nonsense, and you still got to come back and prove who you are." So, don't forget your picture ID. Today, we met with the fire department chiefs and we discussed the Viper radio purchase as well as 911 systems and moving forward with that. I have nothing further?
I forgot, but Ms. Nolan and I did go to the Broadway Council meeting and gave an update on the opioid resolution, so just wanted the commissioners to know that.
Yes, we're meeting our obligations for the settlement. Thank you.
And I did go walk our property today where they're wanting deasement for the power at the sporting...
Sports complex.
Yeah.
Athletic park.
Athletic park. So I'll field each one of you in on that.
Okay. I did take the opportunity as well to visit the athletic park, and it was a rainy day, so it was a good thing. The Gator was a two-man seater, and with the fact that we were out there running around on the construction site, he did mention the fact that we're not dodging any heavy equipment, so it was a good thing it was a rainy day, so. But the grounds are coming along, it's incredible, and those huge piles of dirt are all going to move because that's the topsoil. So it's moving along. And then I sent pictures to my soccer fiend family, so they know we're working on it. So, without further ado...
Listen, I want to ask you only, you mentioned the radios, the Vipers. Where are we on that issue?
The plan right now is to probably bring it before you guys in the CIP process to move ahead with it, and we would be proposing to include it and add it to the library financing that we'll be doing in July.
Okay. I had a question about that some time ago that I never got an answer for. I would love the opinion that the city has a method of connecting with the Viper system with their existing radios. Are you familiar with that?
I am not. I need to follow up on that. I know our proposal is to put, well, I believe it's 12 consoles in the 911 center to be allow, able to allow them to communicate to our Viper radio system. I need to follow up on whether or not, how they will communicate with that Viper system. My understanding is that they would be staying on their existing system, and I do not know that answer.
Commissioner Lovick, can you add anything to that?
As of now, Viper radios is not in our system, and I don't think the city has capability of talking on it. I'll give you an instance that I talked with some of the rescue and body recovery that we had at the river, for instance. Normal radios would not talk there. Thankfully, some of the departments had Viper radio, so the main thing is, or not one, the main thing, but a lot of the main components are being able, other outside agencies were coming in to this event and being able to communicate with them. With our current radio system, they're not able to, but thankfully, we had some Vipers portables in place, they were able to communicate with other agencies coming in. That's where most other agencies are talking on, is the Viper system.
I understand that, but my point was, and I think I may stand corrected, but I thought I was told by the city, they had a conversion, a way to convert with their existing to the Viper.
Yeah, I don't think they do at this time. I don't think they're, they really wanted anything to do with the Viper system.
I think what you might be referring to is a patch. We do have some infrastructure in place, but I would have to get somebody that's probably smarter in that area to explain that. But I know a lot of our fire departments are looking at dual and tri-band radios that can maintain communications with the VHF and UHF systems that the city are already on. We're maintaining and investing money in the UHF and VHS systems concurrently with the installation if the board chooses to move forward with the 800 system. So I believe, you know, the communications, there shouldn't be a gap. You know, if they go forward with those dual bands and have the VHF, they should be able to talk to city fire when they do those mutual aid responses.
Yeah, I think any money we can save on that transaction ought to be saved. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Motion's been made to adjourn.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned, thank you very much. Please drive safely, wear your seatbelts, and no speeding.